All right, everybody ready? All right, well hello and welcome to the Federway City Council Meeting for September 3rd of 2019. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, well I think you've got a good agenda for us tonight. We'll start off with the Police Department swearing in Officer Clark and we have Chief Wong please approach for that purpose.
Good evening Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda and members of the council. It's my pleasure to introduce to you one of the newest members of the Federway Police Family and the oath of office will be given tonight by Mayor Farrell. Officer Alex Clark is an experienced lateral police officer and began with our agency on July 16th and he recently completed our field training program and is working in a solo capacity. Alex earned a BA in Criminal Justice from Washington State University. He has worked for two law enforcement agencies, the Post Falls Police Department in Idaho and the Pierce County Sheriff's Department. In 2018, he resigned from Pierce County to help run a family business of Clark Architects and to pursue his passion to explore medicine becoming an EMT. After gaining some experience in emergency medicine, it became clear to Alex that law enforcement was his preferred career field. We're very glad Alex decided to re-enter law enforcement profession and choose to work for us. One interesting note about Alex, Alex's father, David Clark, was the architect who designed and built the city hall in the Police Department.
Wow.
Alex gets to work, he was much younger when his dad did all this, but Alex gets to work in a building in which his father built and designed. And joining him tonight is his wife Holly, she's seated right here in the front, and Mrs. Clark, she's here as well. And the reason Mr. David Clark isn't here tonight is he did unfortunately pass away. So, yeah. Anyways, please join me in welcoming Alex to our city.
Officer, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Alexander Clark.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Federway.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Federway.
And will to the best of my judgment.
Will to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly faithfully.
Truly faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer.
Perform the duties of the police officer.
In and for the city of Federway.
In and for the city of Federway.
And King County, Washington.
King County, Washington.
And as such duties as prescribed by law.
And as such duties as prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Okay, next we have a proclamation for Constitution Week, September 17th through 23rd. Deputy Mayor Honda.
Thank you. Would Sally Jarvis, Daughters of American Revolution, come to the podium, please? This is a proclamation recognizing September 17th to the 23rd as the Constitution Week. Whereas September 17th, 2019, marks the 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas Public Law Number 915, signed by President Dwight D. Eisenhower in 1956, guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th as Constitution Day, and whereas celebrations are to emphasize citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending the Constitution as we preserve it for posterity, to inform the people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and the foundation for our way of life, and to encourage the study of historical events that led to the framing of the Constitution in September 1787. Now therefore, we the undersigned mayor and city council members of the city of Federway do hereby proclaim September 17th to the 23rd, 2019, to be Constitution Week in Federway, and we ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 and to reflect on our heritage of freedom.
Thank you, thank you Mayor Farrell. And thank you council members. It's my privilege to be here again to accept this proclamation on behalf of Lakota Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution. When the Constitution Committee met in Philadelphia, there were no women present, but just because there were no women on the committee does not mean that the women had no influence. There's a book called Wives of the Signers, Women of the Constitution, Wives of the Signers, by Mrs. E. McKinnney, that contains essays on 43 of the wives of the signers of the Constitution. And this is available on Amazon in case you're interested in reading how these women influenced history. Were our founding fathers perfect? No. Is anyone today perfect? If there's anybody here who'd like to claim that, please stand up so we can recognize you as the only perfect person in the history of our country. The fact that they were not perfect does not negate the work they did, nor the honor that they deserved for that work. We cannot judge people who lived in the 18th and 19th centuries by 21st century standards. I'm sure most of you have seen the movie or the play 1776, which is about the beginning of America. Although it doesn't deal with the Constitution, I think it's appropriate. While the movie may not be 100% historically accurate, they probably didn't dance around while they were discussing independence. Large portions of the dialogue were taken directly from letters and memories of the actual participants, and there is a scene where they are about to remove a paragraph which would have prevented slavery had it been left in. John Adams is speaking to Ben Franklin. "Mark me Franklin, if we give in on this issue, posterity will never forgive us." And Franklin replies, "What would posterity think we were, demigods? We're men, no more, no less, trying to get a nation started against greater odds than a more generous God would have allowed. First things first, independence, America. If we don't secure that, what difference will the rest make?" So I think this is a fitting response to those who would denigrate our founders. They did what they had to do to get this country started. Most of you are too young to remember a show that aired in the 1960s called Slattery's People. It's about a man newly elected to the state legislature and his struggles as he deals with endless rules and opposition party. I'm sure you council members can probably relate to that. At the beginning of each episode, a narrator said, "Democracy is a very bad form of government, but all the others are so much worse." I hope as council members you can always remember that as you represent the people of Federway. And I'd like to leave you with one more quote from US Senator Robert Byrd regarding the Constitution. "Study the Constitution because it is both the foundation and the guardian of our liberties. Study it also with the knowledge that as strong and enduring as our Constitution has been, it is nevertheless a fragile, almost intangible thing that cannot survive without the dedication and constant support of citizens." And that means all of you, not just the council members. I've brought for the mayor and each council member a copy of a booklet called Constitution and Fascinating Facts about it. I hope it will be useful to you. I'm sure you've all read the Constitution, but there might be some little tidbits in there that you don't know about. It also includes all the amendments. So it's quite fitting that we take this anniversary of the Constitution to reflect on and honor this document and those who wrote it. Thank you for this proclamation and thank you for the time.
Well said, thank you very much. And thank you for the book. All right, Item C will be moved to the next meeting. The individual who was going to Mark Williams Sweet with the Hospital Mental Health Residential Coordinator with Behavioral Health and Recovery Division couldn't be with us tonight, so we'll move this to the next meeting. All right, Item D, Certificate of Recognition, Federway Soccer Association donation of $50,000 toward the field turf replacement at Sahale Park. John Hutton, our Parks Director and Councilmember Johnson to Josh Cheatham, Federway Soccer Association President and George Pfeifer, FWSA Fields Director. John?
Good evening Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council. For my entire 27 years plus with the city of Federway, I've had the pleasure of working with Federway Soccer Association and its members. Federway Soccer Association has always been a fantastic partner and we value our relationship and partnership deeply. Over the years, Federway Soccer Association has made many large donations to help make soccer conditions better for the kids and the entire community. They have donated many countless numbers of brand-new sets of goals, nets and protective netting at the fields to keep the balls out of the street and keep kids safe. They also make large cash donations like this one. So, and they provide volunteers for our Parks Appreciation Days, and whenever we really need a hand, we can reach out to them and we can always get help. So they're very much appreciated and is a testament to the association that they have managed their funds in such a way that they're consistently able to give back to the community. You don't see that with a lot of youth sports organizations and they're consistent, this has been going on for years. We're very, very fortunate. I first met George Pfeifer in 1992, I believe he was the second person I met as I started with the city. And he has been the main contact for our department throughout the years. George is also a longtime member of our Parks Commission. And Josh Cheatham has done a great job in his many roles with the Federway Soccer Association, including President, and this type of night and thank you would not be possible without his leadership. And to add one last thing, the Sahale project that they donated to so generously with $50,000, the project started today. The bulldozers and things are there, so thank you very much.
Thank you, John. So I would like to invite Josh Cheatham and George Pfeifer to the podium, please, to accept the certificate of recognition. So on behalf of the elected officials and the citizens of Federway, Washington, in recognition of your generous donation of $50,000 to help replace the field turf at Sahale Park, and continued support throughout the years which have elevated the conditions of the fields that the children and adults enjoy every day in Federway. Your hard work, generosity and continued support help make the city of Federway a better place to live, work and play, dated this 3rd day of September 2019. Thank you again.
If I could just say just a couple of words. We appreciate the partnership and the working relationship that we've had with not only the elected officials, but the staff of Federway and Federway Parks. Every year we run our tournament, which has been going on for, I don't want to tell you what I was doing in 1992 when George first showed up, but our tournament's been going on for a number of years and it is a great success because of the pride and the effort and the work that the men and women that work in your Parks Department put into maintaining our facilities. And so it brings us joy to be able to contribute to the continued success of the facilities here in Federway and our neighborhood. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, and now, now we have the certificates of appointment for the Senior Advisory Commission. Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. We're going to be handing out the certificates for those that are on the Senior Advisory Commission, and I'd like the city council members to go down and stand over by that end of the dais, all of you. And I will go to the podium. When I call your name, I'd like you to come up and receive your certificate, please. You're welcome to join us, at least for the photo.
Exactly, thank you.
As many people know, this is our, it's a new commission, one of the first new commissions that we've had in a long time. We're very excited about it. The first meeting is this Thursday afternoon. And so as is usual, after people are appointed to the commission, we hand out certificates and that's what we're doing tonight. You'll also get your notebooks, so that you can look at your notebooks before the meeting on Thursday afternoon. So when I call your name, if you can come up and get your certificate, a council member will give it to you and just stand in the front because we're going to get a photo at the end, okay? So I'd like to invite Debbie Harvey to come forward. Lynette Curasuda? I know, I mispronounced it, I'm sorry. We are very excited for the work that this commission will do. You have a lot of work ahead of you, we know that you're going to do great things for the city. So congratulations and thank you for your volunteer service.
We're going to mix in the council with you guys. Why, we need to have some space. Can the council mix her out? But a lot, make sense?
It's like a step back.
Okay, we're fully lopsided, so Jesse, can you slide down? Martin, can you slide down? Got lots of cameras, just keep smiling. You know, when you guys are done, if you guys want to go to the bathroom, go in and have fun.
Thanks for the donation.
Susan, give me a shout out.
Yeah, oh, thank you.
One, two, three.
Awesome.
He ran in the picture just now.
Don't move yet, wait a minute.
Congratulations. You know, I want to say that it took many, many people and a lot of visioning for this process to occur. I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank all the council. All the council's been very collaborative in this process and, you know, and, you know, so many of the members of the, of the commission had expressed their interest earlier and all the council I know has been very passionate about this. Thank you to the deputy mayor and Martin and all the council and Jesse and, and all the council's been talking about this and, and it's just taking, taken a lot of work and preparation and planning for this and it's so exciting to see this actually getting done. So thank you very much. I think it was Tim Burns, maybe four or five years ago, where I first kind of, where he kept suggesting this over and over and over and it's an, it's an idea that just kept coming around and I just think it, it's going to be really exciting to see the results and to see the work of those in our community who have experience and, and the passion to, to help our community. So thank you. Okay, now, Diversity Commission, certificates of appointment for the Diversity Commission. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to invite Ali Hajidari and Larissa Lincoln to come forward to accept their certificates of appointment to the Diversity Commission.
Now, back to the Emerging Issues Report. We've got a back-to-school safety briefing.
With school starting this week, it's important to remind our citizens to drive carefully at school zones and around school buses. Without a doubt, driving a motor vehicle for our law-abiding citizens by far the most dangerous thing that we do each and every day. In 2017, there were just over 17,000 murders in our nation. That same year, there were over 40,000 people that were killed as related to traffic accidents. With most murders, generally it's committed by someone you know, family member, domestic violence and so forth. Very seldom are they random. Whereas traffic accidents, vast majority of the 40,000 people that get killed are at random, just by chance. You are far more likely to die in a traffic collision, far more likely to get injured in a traffic collision, yet when there's firearm death, sees far more media attention, high profile, clearly leave an impression with our citizens that crime or other factors are where people are hurt or killed the most, and that's simply not the case. So the key thing here is really distracted driving. Distracted driving is the leading cause for traffic accidents and it's certainly on the increase, especially with people using smartphones while they're driving. Very common for people to be texting when they're stopped at an intersection on a red light. You could stop at any major intersection and write tickets all day long. But we do this because this is something that we do every day and most of us just take it for granted. We don't realize the danger involved, involved with driving. If you knew that you were going to get hurt or possibly hurt someone or get killed while driving a vehicle, you probably would not be doing other things in the vehicle. But yet, this is a big problem, so we need to remind our citizens to drive carefully. School zones, when flashers are blinking, the speed limit is 20 miles an hour. We have to be alert as drivers because We have to be alert as drivers because children often unpredictable and they tend to ignore hazards and take risks. Younger people tend to take more risks. Got to be careful. We have three school zones with school photo enforcement, and that's at Panther Lake Elementary on First Avenue. Soholy Middle School has two school zones, one on Southwest Campus Drive and one on 21st Avenue. And the third location is Twin Lakes Elementary on Southwest 320th. So, we have photo enforcement at those locations and particularly around school zones there, avoid distracted driving. I think this is where there's some confusion in terms of what to do around school buses. So, let's look at the first diagram. If it's a two-lane roadway, if you're approaching a school bus from behind, obviously you need to stop and it's obviously you need to stop if you're coming from the other direction. If you're looking at a multiple-lane roadway, for example, in diagram two, you have two lanes east direction. Vehicles approaching the bus from behind has to stop, but the vehicles approaching from the opposite directions do not have to stop. For example, on PAC Highway, the children will never be led out of the bus and expected to cross a multi-lane road. That, that practice changed many, many years ago. And then you have, this is where most people get confused, is when you have a three-lane roadway with, there's a center turn lane. You have to stop if you're approaching the bus from behind. You have to stop if you're in the center turn lane approaching the bus from behind. However, if you're coming from the opposite direction, you do not need to stop. And this is, I think I see this quite a bit on 320th. Now, if you choose to stop, that's okay. You know, I think most people aren't real clear or they don't know and they stop, but if you're coming up from behind in the number three diagram, if you still hit a car that stopped in the road even though they don't have to, you're still going to be at fault for causing the accident. So, there's no harm in stopping, but want to let you know, letter the law, you do not have to stop if you're coming from the opposite direction. Also, in a two-lane road, if there's a solid barrier, you do not need to stop. So, those are the four scenarios, but again, thank you for the opportunity. I think it's a good to remind our citizens that, to drive carefully this time of the year and all year round because it's no different in Federal Way. It is the most dangerous thing and our officers respond to between six to eight accidents a day.
Councilor DuKlopp.
Chief, do we have signs up reminding people of these things at the lights or right, or before the lights?
I'm sorry, warning signs where?
Where the, where the lights are going to be so that people, you know, because you can tell them this, but people will forget. So, I was just wondering if we have like, signs up that say you must stop at this light when it turns red or yellow. So, something like that.
Digital signs.
Huh? Digital signs, whatever.
All right, we'll look, we'll look into it.
I think that would really help people an awful lot.
All right, thank you.
Like educational, it's okay.
I, I do think that, you know, we're talking about drivers now, but there are, every year, especially when the weather starts to, you know, when we, starts to get darker earlier and, and pedestrians really need to be aware as well and, you know, tell our young people not to be looking at the phones when they're out walking around. We need to be, every year we have people crossing, even safely in crosswalks where they get struck. They just need to be aware of their, of their surroundings. So, we need to tell the young people in our lives to just be very, very aware when you're walking around and walk defensively as well, so.
That's good advice, Mayor. You might have the right away, but you're going to lose if you're a pedestrian.
That's right. That's right. Yeah, you know, we were, you know, just, I've got a 12-year-old and so whenever we are out walking around, I insist that we put the phone away until we get where we're going, just because I think it is, it's, it's a habit that people get into. Okay, thank you very much, Chief. Okay, now in regard to my report, we've had the Federal Way Public School, the new, the new teachers for the Federal Way Public School Breakfast, that was on August 12th. That was a great event over at the Performing Arts and Event Center. It was great to see all the teachers there and, and just to show you what kind of impact, you know, teachers have across so many, so many thousands of people across their careers. I got up and I was able to say a few words as was a great teacher from one of the, one of the high schools and a young senior now, actually no, I, yeah, she's a senior now at Thomas Jefferson High School and, and Dr. Campbell spoke. When I had an opportunity to speak at this breakfast, I actually had an opportunity to talk about teachers that had a profound impact on my, in my life and one of the, one of the participants, one of the new teachers came up and said, "That teacher, who was an inspiration to me, had, had also taught them, you know, 20 years later." And so, it just, just think of all the people that these teachers, that all the lives and careers that they impact over the years. And so, it, today was our first day of school for my son and many other children in the school district and, and it is really good to see, see the kids back at school and, and also, or just we're very thankful for the work that the teachers do and, and all of their sacrifices. So, and I think this is a great tradition that Dr. Campbell has started about welcoming new teachers in and really getting them infused in this. So, it was, it was a good breakfast. Okay, so we had, let's see here, we have upcoming events. We've got the groundbreaking ceremony for the DeVita Building. There had been much discussion and much work. I just want to thank, thank Tim Johnson in the back of the room, E.J. Walsh and Brian Davis and the countless hours that went in to making sure that DeVita was able to come in. This is a huge, huge business. It's going to come in, they're literally going to build a new building in Federal Way. It was about whether we moved a line on a map for a road that was long, is not even paid for or contemplated about when this road is going to be put in. But it was, this council approved the moving of that, of that future overpass on 324th. That cleared the way for DeVita to come in. They're going to build another building, probably close to tens of millions of dollars, they'll do that, and up to 1,000 new employees for the City of Federal Way. That is a huge deal for this community and it's a big victory and I'd just like to thank the council and the staff and, and a lot of work went into this and it's a big deal. That's over there off 32nd Avenue on the east side of the freeway and that occurs on September 9th, next Monday. We've got the Quarterly City Update at the Chamber of Commerce, that's on September 10th, and myself and several council members will be there over at the Chamber of Commerce. That's always a good discussion. Let's see here. We've got the 9/11 ceremony at South King Fire and Rescue Station 64 on September 11th. I believe that's at 1:00 P.M. If you haven't had a chance to go to that memorial, they actually have sites, they actually have memo, not memo, they have artifacts. Artifacts, thank you. Thank you for the word. They actually have artifacts from the locations back east where the 9/11 incidents occurred and the beams and from, you know, the, the areas back east where 9/11 occurred and it is always a great ceremony to hear from the, our first responders. So, that's again on 9/11 next week. We've got Experience the Food, Experience the Difference Food and Beverage Showcase at the PAC, September 12th. Boys and Girls Club fundraiser breakfast, September 17th. Encourage all, all the folks to come to that. The Korean Quarterly Meeting in this room on September 17th. Mayor's Day of Concern at Area Grocery Stores on September 21st and more, we'll have a presentation and more information to follow in that. All right, council committee reports. First, we've got FedRec, the Finance, Economic Development and Regional Affairs Committee. Councilor DuKlopp.
We have no report as everybody decided to take vacation.
Okay. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. We are going to be having our meeting at 10:00 A.M. on Wednesday, September 11th at City Hall in the High LeBose Conference Room and we have a lot packed up on the agenda. There'll be an update on the TPA, there'll be an, we'll also be discussing a new digital sign, welcome sign on 348th. We're also going to be getting a briefing on the city center access plan and there'll also be discussions on preparations for the upcoming major events such as the Juniors National. That's scheduled to be in December. The Washington Open, that'll be in January. The Northwest Conference Swimming Championships, which will be in February. The PAC 12 Championships, again, February, March. The NCAA Championships in 2021, we're already talking about 2021. The city will be preparing for that. And there'll also be a discussion of bid proposals for future major events that we, the city typically plays a role in, which will be the International Underwater Robotics Championship. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that happened at the Aquatics Center, I believe, last year.
Yeah.
And it was hugely successful and I know every time I wanted to make it out there, I just wasn't able to, but I believe Councilmember Copain attended and it was just a pure perfect image of science and math coming together and making beautiful and amazing creations.
Robots.
Robots. So, and then they'll also, will be, in terms of putting a bid proposal, we'll be putting one for the Northwest Conference Women's Softball Tournaments. And then, last but not least, my favorite one, I believe, hopefully with the attorney's help, we will be putting a, all the paperwork together to make an official vote to rename this committee from the Federal Way Lodging Tax Advisory to the Tourism and Visitors Committee. So, that way people can understand what that really means. Sometimes simplifying things can be a good thing. So, that'll be headed towards the Federal Act Committee for action, I hope, this month, later this month.
You better treat her nice.
Yeah, as the chairwoman just said, I better treat her nicely. I wanted to put that in the microphone, Councilmember DuKlopp. So, okay. With that, I will end my report. Thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Land use, Councilmember Copack.
We actually have quite a long agenda for, it's the next meeting for land use transportation will be next Monday, 5:00, right here in council chambers and I will be attending remotely and Councilmember Trump graciously volunteered to chair our committee meeting. So, looking forward to, to attending and, but a few things we're going to discuss, we know award, we're discussing the awarding of the citywide adaptive signal control. This is something that's been long, long in coming, but basically this is going to affect the entire city and improve our traffic flow by being able to have a system that adapts to traffic as it's occurring, allowing traffic to flow as, as often as possible. So, that is the theory and there's a lot of research that's gone into it and it's something that's been a long time in coming and definitely looking forward to having that discussion and potentially moving that forward to the full council for a vote on the 17th. We're also going to be discussing the Federal Way Link Extension. For those of you that are interested in what's going on there, we'll have an update from Tony DiSette. And we're also going to have an update from Biladino on the aircraft issues. Certainly is a, something that all of us are experiencing more of. So, I definitely look forward to having a, a good discussion on that as well as the other things I've discussed, so, and many more that I have not. So, anyway, look forward to seeing those of you that can attend.
All right. Parks, Recreation, Human Services, Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, our next meeting is next Tuesday, 5:00 here at City Hall in the High LeBose Room. We have quite a jam-packed agenda, busy time of year, a number of police contracts that are going to be, we're going to be talking about. So, thank you to the staff that prepare and audit all those contracts because there's quite a few of them in the police department, busy time of year for that. We'll also be talking about El Centro de la Raza, which was passed in the state legislature last year, is going to be building a million-dollar facility here in Federal Way and they're going to actually be starting next January in 2020, they have a, I think, a temporary facility that they're coming to the city with. And so, we're going to be talking about how we can partner between committee and El Centro going forward to service the Latino community. So, great conversation there. We'll also be talking about the Homelessness Task Force recommendations and following up on the recommendations that we prioritized in committee a couple months ago. And then we'll finally be talking about the after-school funding from the state legislature for after-school programs. So, I think Sarah Bridgeford has prepared a, a number of documents around that. And then finally, severe weather shelter updates. So, that's something we've been talking about here on council for a year now and so hopefully going into next winter, we have a, a good plan in place because obviously last year with the, the winter storm was a, was a really dangerous time of year for those that do not have shelters. So, we'll be talking about our plan for next winter. So, with that, I'll conclude my report.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Yes, Sarah's done a lot of work on that and I think everybody will be pleased with the results of that, of those efforts. All right, regional committees, the Public Issues Committee.
Yeah, our meeting in August was canceled, so I don't have a report. However, there's a, a couple of issues that we're going to be voting on, on the 11th of September. So, you already have the emails, so please let me know what you think about those items that are going to be on the agenda. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, and Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So, as you've all heard, August was really a quiet month for council meetings, but September isn't and it gets busier as the year goes on. So, we, I'd like to talk about some commission openings. We have youth commission openings and this is Advisory Board to the City Council for issues that are of importance to youth. They meet on Wednesday afternoons and if your youth is interested, they need to be in high school, we would really appreciate their interest in that. Parks and Recreation Commission, we have an opening and the Civil Service Commission. The review of applications is scheduled for Friday, September 20th and you can get your applications at City Hall or online and just send them into the city clerk's[1564.73] online, and just send them into the City Clerk's Office. So, we would appreciate those who volunteer and those who are interested in volunteering in sending your applications in. And that's all. Thank you.
All right. Now, moving on to Citizen Comment. I've got two pink sheets, and everyone knows the rules. So, Dana Holloway and Eldine Montgomery.
Good evening. My name is Dana Holloway. I have been vocal about my concerns regarding the city budget, revenue, and expenditures, and debt situation, and the effect it has on public services and facilities provided by the city at Federalway. This morning, I sent an email to Mayor Farrell, City Council, and Dr. Tammy Campbell, per FWRC 3.30.040, multi-family dwelling unit limited property tax exemption. City Code allows for a 12-year property tax exemption for only committing to rent or sell at least 20% of the units to low and moderate income household. That means for a 300-unit apartment complex, only 60 units are required to be rented to low and moderate income households for the developers to qualify for a 12-year property tax exemption. The following items will be resulting in more additional affordable low-income housing coming to Federalway. The Microsoft Initiative contributing $500 million to address the affordable housing crisis in the East King County and Puget Sound area, the January 2019 Statement of Mayors in support of the Microsoft Affordable Housing Initiative, the recent King County Council announcement to invest $1 million for affordable housing over the next 20 years, and the Sound Transit 80-80-80 policy will apply to the surplus property in City Core after the completion of the Federalway Link Extension Light Rail Station. As stated in the Federalway Comprehensive Plan, it is the city's, it is the city government's responsibility to provide the public services and facilities. The question is, how will the city be able to accomplish this with increasing population without property tax revenue for 12 years? The effect of population growth can be positive or negative, depending on the circumstances. A large population has a potential to be great for economic development, but limited resources and a larger population puts pressure on the resources that do exist. When there is not enough revenue to fully fund the city budget, it results in decreased level of service provided by the city. That is the current situation we find ourselves in. There are many challenges and opportunities facing the city. We cannot continue managing business as usual, because that is not working. It's important to take the initiative and implement changes that will be best for the city and not the interests of outside forces that do not live in our community. I'll end with a quote, "A vision without action is a dream." Thank you.
Eldine Montgomery.
Thank you to the mayor, deputy mayor, city council members for hearing me today. It's my first visit to the city council. I'd like to share a very sad story. In sharing, I hope you will all be cautious and maybe think of some great solutions. On Thursday, July 25, I dropped my mortgage payment in the drive-through collection box at the 328th and Park Highway Post Office, July 25. On Friday, July 26, a man found my mortgage payment check face down on the sidewalk downtown Seattle. Pretty good service, but not where I wanted it to go. It was near the train station. On Saturday, July 26, his girlfriend hand-wrote me a note, my address is on the check, hand-wrote me a note, wanting to help me protect my bank balance, but also to return the check. Sadly, on Monday, July 29, I walked to my mailbox, and much to my surprise, is my mortgage check. I wish to share some hard lessons I've learned. Most important, I was told, bad people steal mail out of that mailbox day and night. Day and night. Since then, the supervisor at that branch has configured a metal closing device, so you can't drop mail in there when the post office is really closed. Well, that slows down the wrong people. So, I offered to sit by that mailbox in my little lawn chair with my little cup of tea and my crochet, to warn people who made the same mistake I made. Safe place. This is the post office, and it's right there. And there's a camera. And I was told not to do that, for my own safety. I can't even sit there and warn people. So, I've lived in Federalway for three years. You all have seen changes and are more aware of what's happening in your city than I was, or am now. So, how far does this go? Is there a plan to control or manage bad people? Or will the citizens continue to be asked to further accommodate them? And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilmember Duclaus?
Several years ago, we had that problem up at my, my post office off of 21st Street. People were, you know, putting it in the outside mailbox, and they came up and they just broke the whole thing open and took everything out. I find it's much easier just to drive in there and go inside and put it into the slot in, inside the place. And I think that way it's safer. And most people are doing that. They still have the ability to put it outside, but most of us just walk. It doesn't take you, but five minutes at most to park, go in, drop it in, come out, get in your car, and leave. So, that's what I recommend to everybody.
All right, thank you. Okay, that's it for our pink sheets. Is there anybody else who'd like to talk before the city council? All right, thank you very much. And thank you for those individuals. All right, Consent Agenda. We've got one item for the minutes for the August 13, 2019 Special and Regular Meeting Minutes. Seeing as there's only one item, I, there's no need to ask for whether an item would wish to be pulled. Deputy Mayor Hahn, do you have a motion with regard to Item A?
I move approval of Item A on the Consent Agenda.
Second.
A motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passes unanimously. All right, now on to council business. Item A, inter-local agreement approving membership in Washington City's Insurance Authority, WCIA. First, we'll have a staff report from Ryan Cole, City Attorney. Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. I'm here tonight to discuss staff's proposal, and we do have the mayor's backing for this, to switch our insurance coverage from our current self-insurance scheme that we basically go onto the market through a broker to obtain excess coverage, to instead join the WCIA insurance pool. A little background, the city was a member of WCIA up until January 1 of 2013, when the city withdrew. Since that time until the present, we have been self-insured through a broker. Our deductible is $250,000 per incident, meaning we don't actually use our insurance until we have a loss that equals more than $250,000, which to date hasn't happened. So far, we've paid all of our losses out of the general fund. The coverage is for $10 million in general liability and $10 million in excess liability, which were, basically, those were the amounts that we were able to get at a reasonable rate. We also maintain property insurance with the $25,000 deductible and cyber fidelity insurance. So, with those basically three policies, we are covering the insurance needs of the city currently. In addition to that, we pay a broker $31,000 a year for his services. The principal factor in council's decision to go self-insured was to save money. Since 2013, we've been tracking our losses and how much our actual risk coverage has costed us. That's both deductible and the cost of litigation and paying out actual claims. And the data does not support our theory from 2013. So, so far, every year, we would have been better off under WCIA. And once again, the principal issue here is that we have a deductible that's high enough, and this is the point of being self-insured. It's basically excess coverage. So, we've never had a loss where insurance kicks in. So, here's some numbers. I have 2015 through 19 on here. 15 and 16 are not great years to compare, although they do show a fair representation of kind of what our loss history has been. But we still had some coverage through WCIA still at that time. 17 and 18 are the main years that I want you to focus on. In the left-hand column, we have the insurance premiums that we've paid for that $250,000 insurance policy, as well as the premium for our property insurance. And then we have the litigation and settlement costs in the next column, which, as you can see, in each year, we've gone well over $1 million when you total those two things together. 19 is still in progress, so we don't have a perfect numbers, but the trend is still carrying on. I expect 19 to be in the 570 range, or maybe even a little higher. So, under the WCIA plan that's being proposed tonight, it's a no-deductible plan. So, what that means is we pay a larger premium upfront, but, and this is the key part, litigation and settlement costs are included in that premium cost. So, instead of waiting for a major loss before we approach our insurance company, WCIA would be involved from the very beginning on every size of claim. And it includes litigation. So, that's a huge expense, as you saw. Half of our cost so far in risk has been claims and litigation. Included in that cost is also, are a lot of services, like pre-defense review, WCIA training and education. We're going to go into these in a little more detail later on. Reimbursable training, there are some trainings that staff have to take, certifications that staff needs in order to do their jobs, and WCIA will reimburse some of those. In addition, they offer risk management and consultation services and cyber insurance. So, the risk management and consultations is a very key part of this. The city, when we're trying to manage our risk internally, it's ourself talking to ourself. So, there is huge benefit in having a third party, especially when it's your insurer, coming in and pointing out when things that need to be changed. That, that carries more weight sometimes than us talking to ourselves. In addition to, well, I should say, what we're here to talk about tonight is just to authorize interlocals to join the insurance pool. Part of the requirement of joining is that we agree to maintain general liability insurance for three years. So, that's the premium. Above that, we are, we can purchase optional coverage through WCIA for property insurance and other types of insurance. And I'll go into some of those options in more detail later on, but they are not part of the decision tonight. We'll come back to council as part of the normal budget process and propose a schedule, the buildings we want to ensure, at what rate, and what deductible. But other coverage that is available through WCIA includes auto-physical damage. That's an odd term. Sometimes when we think of auto insurance, we think of the liability associated with crashing your car. But this is just for the physical vehicle and the physical, it's not the tort liability, I guess is my point. So, tort liability is covered in the general coverage. So, this is only for, to replace the physical loss of the vehicle. I'm sorry, skip property. We would obviously need to insure some of our buildings. And you'll see later on in the slideshow that WCIA's rates on property coverage is better than what we've been able to obtain on the market ourselves. They also offer equipment breakdown coverage, which is something we don't have currently. And of course, all of this is very variable, depending on the deductible and the value of our assets. As I said before, the plan is, if council approves membership tonight, we will sign the interlocals saying that we're going to, we're going to join. And then we'll come back to council after consulting with WCIA and finance to get council's approval on the actual coverage for optional insurance. I want to stress, there's numbers to follow. These are quotes from WCIA. They're based on assumptions. Most of the assumptions are listed. I'll try to point them out. But they're all based on assumptions of the value of our assets and deductibles. We've tried to compare apples to apples, meaning in the comparisons, I've tried to use our current deductible rate when we make comparisons. So, the optional property coverage that WCIA offers has various deductibles, obviously. We currently have a $25,000 deductible. At that deductible, they would charge us almost $40,000 for property insurance at a valuation of almost $69 million of property. That is little, a little more than half of our current cost of $70,000 for that type of insurance. And this policy would cover replacement costs of the facilities unless the building is vacant. So, I'm not sure we have any vacant buildings, but most of our buildings are being occupied. So, if we suffered a catastrophic loss, say, to this building, it would be replacement cost. Auto-physical damage is something we don't, do not currently carry. We've been paying, every time a police cruiser is damaged beyond repair, we've totaled it out and paid for a new police car out of the general fund, or out of the risk fund, through the general fund. They offer automobile insurance, and this is something that finance and the Police Department are going to look at very closely. I think it makes a lot of sense. The rates are, of course, variable according to the deductible. And we have, we can choose either replacement cost coverage or value, the, you know, like the blue book value of the vehicle coverage. Our current estimate, and this is just a ballpark estimate, is that our fleet is probably worth about $960,000. If that's true, and we chose a $5,000 deductible, which I think is a good place to start, our annual premium would be about $35,000 for this coverage. We've, we lose vehicles every year. Sometimes we lose a lot in one year, sometimes less. The last few years, we've lost quite a few vehicle, police vehicles to, they've been totaled either from pit maneuvers, chasing bad guys, or sometimes just, they're just traffic accidents. So, miscellaneous coverage, I, this equipment breakdown is something we don't currently have, and it, it makes a lot of sense to purchase. The $3,000 number that we have here, or $3,500 number we have here, was based on some assumptions that would be boiler machinery that we have in this building and in the Dumas Bay Center, our generator that's out back, the pump that's under the water park at Town Square Park is, is a very complicated, expensive piece of machinery. That would be covered. And this is, this insurance repairs or replaces those heavy pieces of equipment if they fail. And then the last is a, is an estimate. We need to refine this a bit by explaining our current cyber and crime exposure. But they estimate at a $25,000 deductible for crime and fidelity, that the deductible, about $10,000. We do have crime fidelity insurance currently, and they charge us $15,729 annually for that. Training, as I touched on before, staff currently, a lot of the staff already participates in WCIA training, but we pay for it. We would get that training for free if we joined WCIA. And then, a lot of accreditation, such as Flagler, there's a whole list of stuff. These, these are just examples. On the slide, some of them can be reimbursed through their reimbursement program for, for those certifications. There is a cap on reimbursements, but we'll explain that in more detail when we come back to council. So, the mayor's recommendation is that we approve the interlocals. There's two interlocals in the packet. One is a pre, basically, it's a promise to join WCIA. And the second one actually joins, it's an amendment to the interlocal that set up WCIA. So, I have Deputy Director of WCIA here, is Rob Roscoe here. He's going to explain a little bit about the history of WCIA and what it is. But it is a, an organization that was created through an interlocal agreement of cities. So, it is, unlike an insurance company that's out to make money, WCIA is basically, its whole purpose is to cover cities, not to make money. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Roscoe.
Thank you, Ryan. Spacebar? Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council. My name's Rob Roscoe. I am the Deputy Director of Washington City's Insurance Authority. Like Ryan said, we are an interlocal government agency. We were created back in 1981, primarily because the old adage, you can't fight City Hall. Well, someone found a way to fight City Hall and win. Waiver sovereign immunities and erosion of defenses made governments a tough insurance risk. So, the general insurance market really restricted coverage and couldn't make a profit underwriting governments. So, they pulled out of the general market. And that left a lot of agencies struggling with what to do. So, they decided to create their own insurance company through the Interlocal Act. So, I am actually a public employee, part of PERS, part of the whole government Public Records Act, and all the other fun things that go along with working for a government agency. Created, like we said, back in 1981 with nine cities, we now have, or municipalities, we now have over 155 different municipal and interlocal government agencies. In order to be a member in WCIA, you have to be a municipality or a municipality-type organization created through, like, 911 dispatch centers, SCORE, Metro Parks, all the different interlocals that are created via municipal or contracts. We have probably the strongest, not probably, I know we have the strongest financials of any risk pool in the state of Washington. We have over $160 million in assets. We have about 60 million undesignated reserves. That means we have 60 million set aside to try and help stabilize rates. And that's probably one of our significant goals in being in a pool, because rates can fluctuate. We understand you have a budget. You're trying to balance your budget every year. You want to know what's going to line item for insurance, what's that going to be every year. So, we try to avoid the big swings of the ups and downs. And that's a risk-sharing pool. That's what we are created to do. We're trying to keep it stable. The most our rates will go up or down on any given year is plus or minus 15% on top of any actuarial recommended overall rate. For instance, this year, the actuary recommended a rate increase of 5%. So, that means any one city or municipality in WCIA's rate will only go up 20%, which is at least comforting to know that you're not going to see triple-digit increases, because right now, the insurance market is extremely tight. It's hardening, is what they try to call it out in the industry, and rates are getting very, what do I want to say, erratic. Actually, I'm going to London next week, to Lloyd's, because we buy insurance. We insure the first $4 million in any one loss. Above that, we buy reinsurance. And we'll kind of go over what that means here. One of the advantages of being in WCIA, too, is we are run by our members. We are a member-driven organization. Everyone who is a member of WCIA has what we call a delegate and serves on a full board. We have three full board meetings a year. We also have an executive committee that is elected out of the full board. Nice thing about being a member is you get to decide coverage. For instance, drones just came about recently with their utilization in different departments, especially in the police, park, and rec, seeing a lot of drone coverage, or a lot of drone utilization. In the past, those were excluded. Now, we've included drone coverage. We're always looking at what you guys are doing and what could go wrong, and how do we protect our members and our members' assets. So, that's kind of a unique thing, rather than just an insurance. So, that's kind of a unique thing, rather than just an insurance company who's trying to limit their bottom line and create a profit for their shareholders. We also have stability and transparency in rates. Our rates are determined annually by an actuary. So, it's a struggle between stability and holding someone accountable for the losses. We are a risk-sharing pool, so your losses are going to impact other members. We don't accept any city that just wants to join WCI. We do a review of your losses. We look at whether or not you're going to be a good fit, because we don't want to take on bad risks, because that means everyone's going to have to pay for those bad risks. But we also recognize you can't avoid certain aspects of your job. You have a police department. That alone is going to create some potential liability exposure. So, what we try to do is help you manage those risks through risk management. We're not going to tell you how to run your city, but hopefully, we're going to try and give you some tools to help you run it in a way that will minimize or mitigate the damaging elements of those aspects. So, we have a very robust program for training. We have assigned risk management reps. And the other nice thing is coverage is determined by the executive director. We're located in, our offices are in Tukwila. Our executive director is right there, a phone call away. I've used to work for insurance companies. I didn't have direct access to the CEO of my insurance company. Here, you do. You can call up and immediately get a response from the executive director. And if coverage is in question, and it is determined by the executive director, you would appeal it to the executive committee. The executive committee is comprised of members from the full board. There are nine members on the executive committee. So, you would have a direct appealable right to other municipal organizations. Coverage, we offer $20 million in liability coverage. Used to be 25 million. We had to change it last year, because when I go and buy excess coverage, we had one player that wanted to increase rates despite the fact that we've never come close to hitting that layer and exert claim control at that layer. Why did they want to exert claim control? So, that way, they could force us to settle any claim, and it would never even reach them. So, we said, that's ridiculous. I'm not going to pay $1 million for a layer of insurance that we're never going to hit and yet have you dictate how we manage our claims. That's ridiculous. But we are always analyzing and looking at how much is too much, but we think $20 million is currently what you have right now is appropriate for municipalities. And that is general liability. That's across the board. Like Ryan said, that includes auto, cyber, that's inclusive of cyber liability, employment practices, E and O, errors and omissions, and stopgap, which is excess workers' comp coverage. We do offer property and auto coverage as well. Like I said, when we insure, we insure the first $4 million in liability for property and auto, we insure the first $750,000. I then buy excess insurance above that for the property. We currently have about $7.9 billion we insure in property coverage. Thus, I have to go over and try and negotiate good rates. I was told this year alone, and we don't have an unfavorable loss history, we can anticipate about a 50% increase in our property rates. That's how the market is turning and how it's hardening. The nice thing is, for our members, they're not going to feel a 50% increase. We're only raising rates by 5%, because again, we insure at a high attachment point that our members aren't directly impacted by the cost of the insurance that we have to purchase. That's the benefit in being in a risk-sharing pool, is that you're not taking on that risk yourself. You're pooling it with other municipalities, and we attach at such a high layer, we try to buffer ourselves from the up and downs of the insurance industry. And it is very cyclical. Now, if I had a crystal ball and I knew what your losses were going to be, I'd be able to underwrite to nobody's business. Unfortunately, I don't have that. If I did, I'd probably be in Vegas. But it is what it is, and we recognize the services that you have to provide, and insurance is part of doing business in today's society. We do offer the crime and fidelity policy as well as the, like I said, the cyber insurance is inclusive of the general liability. The crime and fidelity, I should mention, is a pass-through program. We do not insure that directly. We pass that through to AIG, who we purchase for our members. That's why we couldn't give an exact quote on that. But we do have our own in-house claim staff, so they are experienced. Like I said, we have 155 different members. We've been around since 1981. There's not a lot we haven't seen and dealt with. So, we have very experienced claim staff in-house that are there to assist our members. We listen to our members, whereas an insurance company is more about their bottom line. We will take into consideration how the city feels when we're dealing with claims. So, we will always talk to the city when we're making those decisions so that there is that direct input. Risk management, we have a very robust program. We have four in-house risk management staff. You'd be dedicated, your own assigned risk management rep that staff could call up and run things by, i.e., maybe your parks department wants to take the senior skydiving. I'm not saying you can't do it, but let's just make sure that they have waivers in place, and, you know, they'll go over the controls as to how to limit your exposure so that the city's not going to be directly involved in any sort of claim if you can pass it on to another organization, transfer that risk to another entity. And we also have robust guidelines over different operations, talking about pursuits, pit maneuvers for police, parking rec programs, waivers, hold harmoses, that we can provide samples and examples for staff to utilize. So, again, we want to kind of be that off-site risk manager for the city and help you guys manage those risks. We also have a lot of training. We have a very high training budget for our members. We do it both regionally as well as locally. I used to work for the city of Auburn. When I was down there, we were a member of WCI. I had a trainer come down and train our entire staff for two weeks on different issues. This would happen to be harassment and discrimination, just to make sure that we could get all staff trained. And that was shared. Because it was onsite, we shared the cost with WCI, but that's the benefit. We also offer regional trainings locally, and we do partner with, we have a number of cities around here, Fife, Milton, Puyallup, Sumner, Auburn, Des Moines, Normandy Park, so, Tukwila. We will offer regional trainings and invite staff to that, and hopefully, they'll take advantage of those resources, because a lot of people do, and they're very well-received. We also offer grants. So, if there's a novel idea that could help mitigate your exposures, you can submit a grant application, and that's reviewed by a committee. So, it's not WCI-determined, it's actually a committee comprised of board or delegates from members, and they'll allocate money accordingly to those grant applications on an annual basis. So, questions for me?
Deputy Mayor Hahn, do?
Thank you. I thank you for your presentation. Do you cover earthquake damage?
We do for property. There's separate deductible for earthquake and flood. Earthquake is 5% of the values, up to a minimum of, I think, $250,000, and it is pooled with all the cities together. So, your deductible isn't necessarily just going to be federalized deductible. It will be shared with other surrounding jurisdictions. I think coverage right now, I purchase excess difference in coverage, and I don't have the exact amount, but I think it's close to 300 million.
So, if a major earthquake happened in the Puget Sound and cities from up and down High Five had their buildings damaged, you'd have the ability to cover?
We do.
Awesome.
Yep, and we purchase that through our property program.
Thank you.
Counselor Trent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. My question is very similar to Deputy Mayor. Can you talk a little bit about your secondary coverage? Did you mention that you have $7 billion?
Sure. What we do, we're very typical of like, we like to say, we do a lot with a little. We only have 21 employees, but we do offer $20 million in coverage. What we, WCI self-insures the first $4 million in a liability loss, then we buy excess coverage. We have a layer between $4 and $7 million that we purchase through a government entities mutual. It's similar to a pool. It's not traditional insurance. So, we don't attach to the traditional insurance market until $8 million. So, that's nice to kind of buffer us from the spikes of the cyclical industry. Then, from the $8 million to $15 million, we buy a layer of coverage, and then we buy another layer between $15 and $20 million. So, that's a way for the different insurance companies to kind of limit their own exposure from any one loss. So, no one wants to take the whole loss at any one time.
So, overall, how much in total?
Mike?
Overall, you have, the city would have $20 million in liability coverage for any one occurrence with no annual aggregate on the whole 20. There are individual aggregates, though, that you could reach, but for the most part, you have $20 million.
Thank you. Counselor Rusevadoss?
Thank you. So, what is the threshold that would increase the cost to the city over?
Like Ryan was saying, those patrol cars that get totaled. Claims. Claims impact rates, so if you have, as well as the overall industry. Now, any one claim is not going to significantly increase your rate to any one degree, but you could have death by 1,000 cuts. But like I said, we do cap the overall rate increase that could happen to any one city. Whereas if you go to a traditional insurance carrier and you buy, for your instance, right now, you're attaching at the $250,000 layer, and then you buy an excess policy above that, there is no cap as to what that carrier could ultimately end up charging you based upon your own loss history. So, individual losses will impact rates as well as worker hours. Worker hours are the primary exposure base that we use for our rating. So, if you hire more employees, you're going to be paying more because you have a higher worker base, very similar to what labor and industry does for workers' compensation.
Okay. Then my other question is, do you work closely with AWC?
Yeah, they actually, I get my benefits through AWC, but yes, we do partner a lot with AWC. They have a separate risk pool, RMSA, which is a very good pool. We work closely with them as well. We just tend to offer a little bit more in coverages and benefits and have more trainings and programs to offer.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Good presentation. Counselor DuClo, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. I move approval of the proposed interlocal agreements authorizing the city to join Washington Cities Insurance Authority and to authorize the mayor to take those steps and to acquire no deductible coverage for the general liability.
Second.
The motion is second. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Great presentation, Rob. Okay, now, item B, Federal Lieutenant's Association Bargaining Agreement. Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here tonight to present the final negotiated proposed contract with the Lieutenants Guild, or sorry, the Lieutenants Union. By way of background, the last lieutenant's contract expired at the end of the year of 2018, so we've been out of contract for all of this year. The proposed agreement would cover the period of January 1, 2019 through 2021, the end of 2021. The lieutenants have already ratified the terms of the agreement, and if council approves the contract tonight, it will take effect. Key points to the bargaining agreement, of course, wages are always the number-one issue. Historically, the Lieutenants Guild has received the same wage increase as the Guild, and that is the same agreement that they have negotiated in this contract. In addition to that, some of the other highlights are, they've asked that the city set up an HRA VIBA account for each of their members. That is something that the city has to facilitate as the employer, but they've not asked for a match on that VIBA. We clarified bereavement leave consistent with the Guild. That was just an inconsistency between their contract and the Guild's contract. We've expanded the list of eligible items for reimbursement and then streamlined the method that we'll use to process those reimbursements. In the past, each member could basically submit a reimbursement receipt for every little thing they bought up to the limit of their reimbursable amount, so we were cutting a bunch of little checks. Now, we're going to do it all once. They'll save up all the receipts, and then, once a year, they can submit a claim. We've also increased paid jury duty to be consistent with other city employees. For some reason, they had an inconsistent number in their contract. We've increased it. Not on this list, but it's later on, and I'm not sure why it's not on the key points, but we also, as part of wages, have agreed to begin a deferred compensation program with the union, and I'll lay that out more clearly in another slide. So, these are the increases that are in the contract. They are the same as the Guild. It's a 2% increase for 2019. 2020 would have a 1% increase at the beginning of the year and then a 2% increase in July, and the same again in 2021, a 1% increase at the beginning of 2021 and a 2% increase in July. By staggering those increases halfway through the year, the city does save some money, considerable amount of money in wages, because you don't have to pay the increase for the entire year. The total increase during the contract will be $196,223 over the former wage base. That includes deferred compensation. And the total cost of compensation for the entire contract for the duration for all three years is $5.92 million. And once again, that includes wages and other forms of compensation. So, the other piece to compensation is deferred compensation. We've agreed effective 1 of 2020, the city would match up to 1% of the monthly base rate of pay for the lieutenants, and then in 2021, that would go up to 2% monthly for the base rate of pay. As I said before, the city's agreed to establish a VIBA. I believe the city, the employees are going to do a $25 contribution each. They're all required to contribute the same amount, so they have to agree on that number. Like I said, the city does not match the members' contributions for this contract. Bereavement leave, this was to make it consistent with the Guild. As laid out here, it's 30 hours bereavement leave for family loss, and then up to 30 hours of sick leave can also be used, and then if the chief approves it, another 20 hours can be used if a death has occurred. Reimbursement items, the main point was to, for us, was to streamline the process that we use to process claims, and I guess the quid pro quo, or in recognition of that, we've agreed to include firearms in sites on the list of approved items that can be, the money can be used for. So, just to explain that a little bit more, police officers can purchase private firearms for use on duty. They have to qualify with those weapons, and they have to be approved by the police department's armor. The mayor's recommendation is to approve the agreement. Are there any questions?
Counselor? Counselor Rusevadoss?
Thank you. So, when does the January 2019, yeah, the retro, when do they get paid for that?
The next pay cycle.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Hahn, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move approval of the proposed 2019-2021 collective bargaining agreement with the Federal Way Lieutenant's Association.
Second.
The motion is second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, item C, civil action to collect money from rental agreements.
May I ask a question first?
Yes.
Because I'm accusing, should I leave?
I don't think it's required for you to leave. On the next item, Deputy Mayor Hahn will be refusing herself. I don't think that her absence is necessary. Would you concur?
Yes, there's no reason for you to leave the room.
Okay.
If you want to recuse yourself and not participate in the conversation or the vote, that would be a recuse.
All right, thank you very much for being careful, though. All right, Ryan, please.
So, we're here tonight. I'm seeking authority to institute a lawsuit against the Tacoma City Ballet. We have discussed this in closed session, so this is a fairly terse overview. I don't want to give the impression that we're giving the entire ins and outs and strengths and weaknesses. and weaknesses of the proposed lawsuit, but generally speaking, the Tacoma Ballet utilized the PAC facility for two seasons, two events during the, sorry, two events during the 17-18 season. We've never been paid for the rental use of our facilities. The city believes that under the contract, that the ballet owes us money. We've been trying to negotiate a settlement with the ballet for some time, and so far, they've only offered a percentage, a small percentage, of what we believe they owe us. So when negotiations failed, our only recourse is to try to enforce this contract through legal action. So that is what I'm here tonight to ask, is to authorize instituting a civil action against the ballet to enforce the contract. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Councilor Duclair, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move to authorize the filing of the proposed civil action. Second.
The motion is second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Councilmember Honda, or excuse me, Deputy Mayor Honda has recused. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, that's unanimous with the, with that notation of recusal. All right, that concludes our regular agenda. My next counsel report is Councilmember Raffaeldson. Let's turn to you.
Thank you, Mayor. It's good to be back here. It seems like it's been a while. Deputy Mayor Honda and I were in Denver at the Marijuana Summit, and it really was informative. But my takeaway from that event, and we'll share, I think we've already shared a couple of, a few information with the council, is talking about the future of marijuana use or marijuana, yeah. But anyway, some of the things they pointed out or they highlighted about the future is educating the physicians in future either prescription or how to move forward with, with prescribing, yeah. And then, a lot of research, that we do need to have research done to better understand, because we don't have a lot of the information that we need. However, that they're continuing to do research in this field to better understand the impact of marijuana on the, on the users. And then also, you know, identifying and understanding all compounds, compounds that are in this product. And so I think the future does look promising, and as we move forward, one thing that I really believe in and we should do is always educating the public, and educating especially, most of us are concerned is the use of youth. And so how do we educate and how do we get the word out to make sure that people are aware of the impacts and/or people are aware on how to address the issue? And also, that would ease the concern that a lot of people have around this issue here in our city. And so I'm sure Deputy Mayor will speak to it also, but that was my takeaway from this event and a lot more, but I think we can share it at another time. So with that, I end my report.
All right, Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just a quick, quick update for rental inspection program. I think we've posted on our city's website and on our Facebook page, but there is a meeting for stakeholders for renters on September 24, 6:00 to 7:30 at Sacagawea Middle School, and then September 26 at Ilahi Middle School, same time, 6:00 to 7:30. And then for landlords on September 25, 5:30 to 7:00 here at City Hall. And I think the reason we split the two, there was a couple of questions around that, was just so that everyone has a chance to speak their voice in only an hour timeframe, hour and a half timeframe for our staff to be there. And so hopefully, we'll get some folks from the community out, and we can have a discussion around what we want the comprehensive rental inspection program to look like. And then I think the timeline is, we move throughout the process in land use, and then hopefully by January, we have a vote here on city council. So just wanted to give that quick update, and again, it's on the city's website. I also posted it on my Facebook page, and then it's on the council Facebook page as well. Thank you.
All right, Councilor Tran?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to be home, too.
Exactly.
It was a little bit crazy for our family that within three weeks, and we spent 20,000 miles on the air, which is a little bit too much for me even. So it's good to be home. I just have a quick thing that I want to share with the public and council and the mayor, and that is regarding the mobile medical van. This medical van will serve people on the street, the people who don't have, you know, permanent housing, who are in shelter. And for this month, this medical van will be here in Federal Way. The first one would be on Thursday, September 12, from 3:30 to 7:30 at Cavalry Lutheran Church. And the second time, they will be here on Tuesday, September 17, from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. at Federal Way Day Center. And the last one will be Tuesday, September 24, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at New Hope Fellowship. And that is my report.
Very good. Thank you. Councilor Copain?
Thank you. Make mine brief. I wanted to pass on my appreciation to the Lions Club for throwing a great, another great car show. They have done a great job over the years drawing people into the community to show off their cars. And there was a lot of great cars at this year's show. I think, you know, I just continue to just really appreciate the engagement of the Lions Club and their commitment to our community, and this car show is just one more example of that. Also, I want to thank the Parks and Recreation staff for a great summer sounds concert series. I was, I attended most of them. I missed one, but we had great talent out and saw a lot of community members out enjoying their time at Steel Lake Park. It's a wonderful venue. And for those of you that have not been able to participate in those yet, I hope that next year, you'll be able to make some time. But it's, it's one more of the treasured activities that our Parks and Recreation group put together, and very appreciative for the way they enhance our community with their commitment. So thank you for that. And with that, I'll conclude my report.
All right, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I will echo the words of my colleague, Councilor Jesse Johnson. I'm forgetting all your all's names, because I haven't seen you for about a month. So it's good to get reacquainted with you guys earlier. But, you know, if you're a renter and you're looking for some change in laws that protect tenants, please come to the meetings that we have, that Councilwoman Johnson has stated. I know that he added to his Facebook page, as he stated. I will do the same, and we'll ensure that, we'll make sure that we'll get the word out. Also, if you're a landlord as well, the meeting is also important to our landlords. So again, attend that meeting if you need be. I just, I can't stress it enough, for all voices to be heard, and look forward to having a robust conversation in the land use and transportation. I think that's what you call it, right? Like I said, I'm kind of forgetting things since I've been gone for a month. But I look forward to a robust conversation there, and for a first vote in December, and then a second and final vote by the New Year's. It's a policy that I've been working on for a very, very long time, and I'm grateful for the partnership, close partnership with Councilwoman Copain and Johnson, quite frankly. And I'm just excited to continue to see this move forward. Also, again, really excited about the Federal Way Senior Advisory Commission. I know that some of us will be probably at the first meeting this coming Thursday. I'm just very excited just to kind of watch and learn. A lot more work needs to be done when it comes to advocating for our senior citizens, and one of them that I'm looking forward to discussing at some point is, is there a need for another senior center right in the heart of Federal Way or not? And it's a conversation that we ought to have. There's many other areas of policy discussions I'm looking forward to having. And with that, I will sign off. Thank you.
And when we mentioned Tim Burns previously for his work in advocating for the senior commission, he wasn't here, but he has now joined us, and we'd like to say thank you, Tim, for advocating for this commission, and we were able to honor those individuals who were appointed and provide them with their certificates. I had mentioned your advocacy for this noble venture years ago, so thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, he looks awfully excited in the audience. I mean, he's very thrilled to see all these things happening to us.
Well, and speaking about a senior center, his mother, Mary, worked until she was in her mid, mid 90s at the Renton Senior Center. And he and I actually visited her there on one prior occasion, so just absolutely amazing. So, yeah. Okay, was that it, Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, Councilmember Duclair?
Well, I really don't want to end on this. I did not have such a great time, because as I wrote you and the deputy mayor, I lost a wonderful friend out in Ocean Shores who died. And they were having a reception at his, at his home, his wife's home, with other people stopping by. So my weekend wasn't as good as everybody else's. He was a, he was a council member out there. As a matter of fact, I taught him how to, how to go and win his race. I brought over a lot of stuff and showed him what he needed to do. And I actually went out and doorbelled for him, and you know something? It's much easier to doorbell in Ocean Shores, because it's all flat. There are no hills to go up and down. And he was a very good council member and a very good friend, and it was a tough loss.
Well, thank you, Councilwoman Duclair. It's important to honor those who have been close to us. Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. I'd like to talk about the DESNA Cup. This was their 12th annual event, and this year, they were at three different locations, because they're so large, which is really cool. They met with me about 10 years ago and wanted to know, it was before I was on council, how they could get the word out about their, their event and how to build it. And I don't think I helped them that much, but they are truly amazing, and what they do there is truly amazing. I was honored to be on the stage to give out the awards for the volleyball competition, and to watch that competition was pretty fascinating, the amazing athletes that were there. So congratulations to them. You'll see their banners around the city on the light poles. It's also the time of year when this book comes out, which, if you have an address in the city of Federal Way, you will get one, and they're at the city buildings. This is really amazing. It has programs in here for your family, for, from newborns to senior citizens. I wish that we'd had this when my kids were little, because we would have been doing a lot of this stuff. It's really awesome. And there are scholarships available if you're not able to pay the cost of some of these programs. You just need to ask for information on that. And as Councilmember Raffaeldson mentioned, I did attend the National Foundation for Women Legislators Conference on Marijuana. And my takeaway from that was, this is an interesting group of women. They're from all over the country, and no one ever mentions if you're Republican or Democrat. They don't care. And we all work together really, really well. But my takeaway was that no matter what party you belong to, if you belong to a party, the outcome was that we need to have marijuana deregulated, well, not deregulated, but off of the, so it's no longer considered a...
Schedule.
Schedule I. And so we can study it, because there was a physician there talking about all sorts of things that she has seen in her practice. There was another physician there talking about things that, well, she didn't really believe in those things, because it hasn't been studied. And we need to be able to study it. And the AMA has been urging Congress to allow this to be scheduled differently so that studies can occur. And as a registered nurse, you know, what this one physician was talking about, all the cures for, it's helped people reduce tumors, cancerous tumors, and all sorts of things. And I'm sure that she's seen that in her practice, because she wouldn't have been talking about it. But it isn't confirmed by research, and we need to be able to do the research. Because if we're going to use this as a drug for medical issues, then we need to have the research to back it up, because every drug interacts with other drugs, interacts differently in people's bodies. Then we need to know doses, we need to have the research. And that was one thing I walked away with, was everyone was in agreement. If you liked the prospect of having states allowing retail of medical marijuana, or if you didn't, you still wanted our country to do the research on this, to see what it really can do for medical reasons. So there is information that I left in the office for council members, if you want it. There's a sheet of information, and I know Councilmember Raffaeldson has some more information to pass out for you. It was well worth, it was only two days. It was well worth the time. I learned a lot, and I came away with a lot of questions, but a lot of answers to things that I was wondering about. So I'm certainly glad that we went there. And if you have any questions about any of the information that you have there to read, please let us know, and maybe we can help you out with it. But it was well worth the time. And that's it. And it is 8:15. Awesome.
That's right. And with that, we are adjourned. Good job, everyone.